Council meeting to order at City Hall December 4th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? Jimmy?
Other than that, I requested other additions?
Well, he doesn't have that one. That's what I just said. I changed the executive session.
Oh, well, there it is. Okay.
But do we need one or two?
How long?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
What about my other employee that I've affected?
We can do that on the same one.
Okay.
So maybe 10 minutes.
I don't know if that works.
That's fine. Any other additions to the agenda? Move to approve. Second. Motion and a second to approve the additions to the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed carries three O. Citizens comments?
Nope.
Moving on. Consent agenda improvement. It's a regular council meeting, November 20th, 2018. Also appropriation ordinance 12-4-18 in the amount of $75,404.12 and petty cash $2,595. So moved. Second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed carries three O. Department head committee reports. Anything from Lisa Cornwell?
No.
Anything for Lisa? Moving on. Police chief Jim Cuday. I had talked to Jim. He is in training this week. Potential full-time hire. I know they've done an interview and he had a few discussions, few concerns. I believe he's going to try to proceed forward and have something for you guys at the next council meeting.
Also, he wanted me to let you guys know that the Charger's up and going back in service. Everything's fixed. We don't have an exact, I don't think we've got a bill on it yet, exactly what they've done to it. It is up to.
Do you have anything on the pickup? Did you get anything done on it yet? The sirens and lights or?
We've got a box in it and he's still working on the light bar that we had upstairs.
The siren's in. We put it in last week.
Sirens in and we still have a radio in it yet and we're waiting on the light bars so he can finish that up. Because he had to order some parts for that because the wires were cut for short on it to save us some money on these and that. So I guess it's going to cost us a couple hundred bucks versus seven or eight hundred if we went for the regular light bars.
Anything for Jim, counsel? Moving on. Fire chief Michael Sanders.
I need to add Ethan Houston to the fire department.
Don't hear a motion from counsel?
Second.
Motion and a second to add Ethan Houston to the fire department. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed carries three O.
And also, the house on Second Street that the city has possession of, would it be a problem for us to train in there? I'd be, let's see, do you?
The one on the?
Four hundred. Four hundred, so.
The little house, isn't it?
Yeah.
Gasoline fire?
Yeah.
Yeah. Don't see why not. I mean, would you see?
Do you think it's in your possession?
Well, the city.
City's going to tear it down.
Yeah, city's going to tear it down.
Oh, is that one we've already condemned? Wasn't that one?
Yeah.
Not really condemned. It was.
Deeded over.
Oh, it was the entrance. Probably had a problem. Assuming they don't.
Yeah, it's probably going to be late January. First of February we'll tear it down. So I told him bizarre, I mean, me if it's out of you.
We have some new guys and we'd like to get them in there and start training.
Subject with me to vote on that or just to get consensus?
No, I think it's just pending.
Pending insurance approval? That insurance company's okay with it?
Yeah, as long as they're okay with it, yeah.
Okay. Get with Jamie on?
I doubt it's insured, but.
Well, just as far as our side of it, wouldn't the?
It's not insured somehow without it.
Just somewhere.
It's a liability.
Well, it wouldn't be no different than us training it.
Right.
Somewhere else. I mean, if somebody gets hurt training, they get hurt training. If they get hurt on a fire, that, I mean.
I'd just double check considering it, so.
I wouldn't think the property insurance would take care of that.
It's never been an issue with those types of things.
Just double check to make sure.
Yeah.
Just double check at least.
The plan's not to burn it, but.
That's a good thought, you know. I thought it was going to put the lamp out.
Anything else, Mike?
That's it.
Anything, Mike? Moving on. City clerk Jamie Yetti.
I have the application for Kansas beer permit for next year. I need you guys to approve so we can get it this way. I believe they just send it in yearly and we just.
Approve and go.
Approve and move on. They fill out all the paperwork and send the check. So from there, I think we just send in all that sticker thing and with a check.
Have a motion? Do I have a motion? Second. Motion to approve beer license for Kansas cooperative. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed carries three O.
The only other thing I have right now is we're looking at having the Christmas party. I think it's the 21st. Yeah, apparently, yeah. I believe so. I'll get an invitation out, but I wanted to give you guys the date. I'm still trying to find out a location, like find a location for us to do it. So as soon as I get all of the details figured out, I will get that invitation, but I wanted you guys to have a date. And I think that's it for.
Anything for Jamie at this time?
Just Christmas around the square is good. There's a lot of good things about it.
Yeah, I can't wait till next year and we can put out more lights, right?
You're driving the bus.
Moving on. City superintendent Jeff Williamson.
Couple of things. One, the transmission's going out of the 2007 Chevy. Fed mill looked it over and we've taken some temperature readings. Transmission's running over 300 degrees. It's not circulating, not shifting. We've had some trouble with it off and on for about the last six months, but it never, up until now, it's gotten worse. We called three or four different places about replacing it. Marmy's with a warranty, wanted $4,100 to change it out. It's a, it has to be programmed. It's a 4L ADE and I guess it's, takes a program and deal to do it. I priced the transmission at Harders. It was $2,875 and then $600 for Fisher to install it. And then Mel called a place in Jettmoor that he had, he knew about. It's kind of from out in his country anyway. And then Marshall had told me to call him because I guess his dad had a transmission put in there and they will do it for $2,400 turnkey with a three-year, $100,000 warranty. So I wanted to bring it to you and see what you wanted to do. I know it's, I know it's cheaper. I don't know whether we can get, I don't know whether to drive out there or we have to haul them out. But we'll have two trips, you know, one out there and one to go back and get it. So there'll be some cost involved there.
I'd certainly rather do business here than.
I'd like to keep it local if possible.
That was my thought. That's the reason I went to Harders and it's a DM rebuilt transmission. They'll stand behind it. And they, and Brian had told me they'd done quite a few with Larry and I stopped to talk to Larry a little bit the other day and he said, yeah, what a big deal. He said, you can order it, we can order it. He said, we'll program it, we'll have it right where it'll certify when we're done, so.
What's the total on that?
So it would be 30, basically $3,475, $3,500. So, and we keep everything here in town.
And that was through Harders, you said?
Harders and Larry Fisher's. Yeah, we'll buy the transmission, we'll get billed for the transmission through Harders. And then Larry will pick it up or we'll deliver it. We get to drive it out there, we get to drive it away, I hope, when we're done, so. Anyway.
That's on the 2007 Chevy?
It's on the three-quarter ton, yeah, the one that we graduated down when we got this 18 that went to the street park guys, but they, they keep water tools in it too, so.
Gotcha. Is that something you had, somebody to look at besides Mel, Jeff, or is that?
I had Larry. I, I talked to Larry about it. We told him what it was doing and he agreed that it was time for it to go. Pickup's got about 63 or 4,000 on it. Of course, you want to remember the mileage here and the mileage out on the road is quite a bit different because this pickup might shift 100 times a day. You know, in and out, uptown, downtown, stop for this, stop for that. I mean, it's, it's probably about like having 140 or 50,000 on it, so. I don't, I don't, I feel like it's kind of served its purpose, you know? It's not, it was the first year of a full electronic transmission and that's kind of, if the guys knew and we kicked it out of overdrive and drove it that way all the time, be great. But we don't, you know, and it's just, I mean, I think that's the death of it probably is that it'll shift three or four gears before it gets three blocks. So I think it's kind of the nature of them. I hope that this will solve it. This shouldn't last for a long, long time.
Where are you pulling that from, Jeff?
We'll get it out of the street department. We, there's some money we can shuffle around in there. There's still money available on that account to be able to pay for it, so we're keeping it in the, in the account where it's used, so.
Counsel, have any other concerns or questions?
Well, I just wanted to question, what, what's the reasoning on not putting stuff on the agenda, Jeff? I mean, like, you know, not notifying us before tonight?
I guess I never thought about it. You know, I just had finally got the stuff together this morning. You know, it's not like it was a surprise by any means. I didn't intend for it to be that way, let's put it that way. I mean, the things that I've got on here tonight are things that I've been dealing with all week long and got answers on today. So, you know, I could have put it in at the first of the agenda if that's what you want. But it wouldn't give you any more notice than what, you know, if I had something that was coming up, I would more than, I would more than be happy to put it on there. I just.
I just, I just don't like the night of having thrown at us to spend money.
Sure, sure.
And we have no time to research it. You know, there's no time to notify the public at all, you know, of anything that's going on.
Sure, I'll be glad.
And for any department, it's really, you know, just, our, our agenda looks pretty blank. It's hard for anybody to tell them.
Sure, yeah, I'll be more than happy to. Like I said, I was on vacation until, you know, the middle of last week and by the time I got back and, and we've called these people three or four times all of them to try and get this put together for tonight. So, you know, I guess it never crossed my mind. I sure will be happy to do it that way. I don't have a problem with that at all. Last Friday, we started, last Friday, we started the OP and put it online for about an hour. We developed a, a water pump leak on the front of the engine and I showed Mark when he was down there. Fairbanks in Houston called me back today with the parts. I got, I got the call right after lunch. The parts are not expensive for it, about $250 for the parts. And it'll take a day's labor to fix it. It'll take a Fairbanks mechanic to fix it. The guy that we've used ever since we put the engine in in 1981 comes out of Eldon, Missouri. We used him about three years ago was the last time we had him here for. And, you know, one day's labor and traveling, probably 12 or 1300 dollars, I'm guessing, in order to tear it down and put it back together. At this point right now, I have no jack of water in that engine. If I have to start it, I'm going to hold my breath as I do it. We rely on that engine when it, when the lights go out because of the amount of load that we've got this time of year, we keep that engine warm all the time. But during the course of the last 30 days, we've lost the oil, the oil heater too, the liquid oil heater. And that's part of the reason probably that that seal might have went out. We keep that engine about 150 degrees all the time to keep it warm so we can start it. I've called and called. The company that built that heater is no longer in business, haven't been for 20-some years. I called a place that keeps parts for them, but they have no parts for a 240 volt heater. That's a three-phase, 240 volt, 6KW heater. And that's all it is, is three big heating elements. And so I called Mid-Cotin and Wichita. They're the guys that, that we bought the oil heater for that Cooper from a year ago or two years ago, whenever it was. And they recommended the same heater as what we bought then. I found a place in Kansas City that will sell it to us $1,000 cheaper than they will. I could buy it for 38, 39, 38 and I could have it in 25 days. If it wasn't such a necessity, I would not worry so much about it. But in order to start that on short notice, we need to keep it warm. We've kept it warm every day since 1981. So I think the heater's probably served its purpose. But it'll take, like I said, from the time I call them, it'll take 25 working days to get it here. If it was 480 volt, they had one in stock in Kansas City, but it's not, it's 240 volt. So, anyway, I'd like to, I'd like to go ahead and order it if, if at all possible.
Is that 250 ship or is that a shipping extra on the, with your parts?
The parts will come in a box about this big.
Okay.
It's a seal and some gaskets and a spring and some other stuff.
All right.
If it's on the shaft, but you saw the water running out of it. I mean, you know, the sooner, that's the thing that worries me. I mean, we have no, we have no treatment in the jacket either and that causes corrosive and the sooner we get it back together, the better off it'll be. And the parts should have got mailed out this afternoon or shipped out this afternoon. I hope they did anyway. So, but, okay, he travels all over the country and he said I'm really snowed under, but he said, if you'll get the parts and you've got them in hand and you call me, I will try and get there as quick as I can to replace them, so.
So you said that was 250 total from Fairbanks?
Yeah, from Fairbanks out of Houston, yeah.
Would you gain another 1,200 to install it?
Probably.
Something that probably leads to 15.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's under my spending limit. I just thought it was something you probably aren't know about, so. And, but the heater is a, it's a critical item. I mean, I need to do something if I can.
What's the total on that?
On?
The heater?
39, 39, 38.
What, is it?
That's from Chromalox out of Kansas City.
39 what?
39, 38. Plus some freight, I'm sure. I don't know what it'd cost to freight it out, a couple hundred bucks.
30?
$3,938.
Okay, different issues.
Two things.
Two things.
Okay.
Two things. Same engine, two things. So.
Well, it's getting that time of year, we're going to have to, every engine's around in case we have a big storm.
We're right at the borderline right now of what we can pull with that Caterpillar. You know, and the only fear I have is I think we could load that jacket full of water and start it and once it warms up, maybe it would seal. If it doesn't, we're going to do some scrambling to try and get somebody to shut something down so we can stay below that Caterpillar, pull just under 1,400. This afternoon, we had 1530, somewhere 100 KW or somewhere close. You know, I could probably, I thought about going to the school and talking to the superintendent. If we did get in a terrible bind in a snowstorm, if we could get them to shut school down, send the kids home, shut the load off, we could drop it down enough we can keep everybody on.
Where are you going to pull that from on the 39, 38?
It comes out of electric production. 41, 41. And there's plenty of maintenance money there. We didn't spend that money on the governor, so.
Sure, sure. I'd entertain a motion to fix the heater in the amount of 39, 38 from Chromalox and KC plus freight from electric production. So moved. Second. A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed carries three O.
I do apologize for not getting that stuff on, guys. If there was any way I could have done it, I would have been more than happy to.
Sure.
I, I'm really not, I'm not trying to hide anything from you because I mean, we've had a discussion.
It makes it so I can't get hard on that.
I understand.
Decision.
I understand.
Fair decision.
Yeah, well, it doesn't give you time to evaluate anything that we put on there. I understand that and I will, I'll work really hard to get it in in time that you know about it, so. I've got some other things, some contract stuff and some of that I missed with Greg Wright this afternoon. We do not have a decision yet. Contract negotiations start in January. I do know that Midwest Energy would be, they've tried to entertain a deal with us to try and be negotiated by January 1st. And so probably what it will entail, if Greg can get it together between him and Aaron Romi at Midwest Energy, we might want to call a special meeting before the 1st of the year. I think it'll be advantageous to the council and to the citizens to do. It's a, it's a long-term wind energy project with Next Era and they're willing to give us a pretty good deal for 10 years. So, cheaper than anything we've done. It'll give us the opportunity, if, if it goes the way that we've been missing, to give the, the community a little relief on their, on their ECA charge and put a little bit of money back in on us to, and not have to raise the rates or do anything else. So I think it'll be advantageous to everybody, but until we get to that point, I, I really don't know how to present it to you, so I'll let Greg do that.
Sure.
We put out an application for Mel's job. Haven't heard anything or Jamie hasn't let me know of anybody yet, so. We have a wire fall on the number six well and we're not sure what it entails and not been able to get anybody down here yet to check it. So whether it's a fault in the, in the controls or whether it's in the, in the winding in the pump or where it's at, we do not know at this point in time. As soon as we do, I'll let you know. We'll try and have something evaluated before next meeting so that everybody knows.
Which one is it, Jeff, from others?
It's the west one. It's the, it's the submersible out of the west well.
Yeah.
Been in since early 90s, '92, '93, I think, when we put that well in. So, anyway, you know, I don't know, I don't know what kind of a hole we're going to look at. If, if it comes to the point that we have to pull it, it might be, it might behoove the council to maybe run a camera in that and look at it while it's out of the hole if we do get to that point. So we'll evaluate what the costs are, I'll try and get them down and have them for you next meeting so that we know. We're not, we're not in a bind. We've got plenty of water left and this time of year, we run about 30% less than what we do in December, so we're okay. But sooner we can get it evaluated, the better off it will be.
Okay.
Other than that, that's all I have, I think.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve the transmission to be fixed on the 2000 Chevy three-quarter ton in the amount of 3,500 to be bought from Harder and installed by Fisher Service. So moved. Do I hear a second?
That was, it's 3,500 for labor and tax?
Yeah, Larry said just about 600 to put it in, so.
Is it a?
It's a street pickup, there'll be no tax on it.
So as far as like, I feel like we've had a lot of stuff happen this year, like as far as unexpected stuff. Is it something that we should wait till next year or not?
You're running old equipment and that's what happens.
I understand, I understand.
I don't, I don't think we can. You know, I, I think it needs to be fixed. The money's there to do it.
Well, I'm not saying that, I'm saying.
If it was, if it was the old shop pickup, yeah, I would wait. But this pickup, I mean, it, it's equipped with water stuff in it and we use it on every water lease that we go to. If we don't take it out of town, it might last.
That might be something to think about.
But, you know, I'll do whatever you want to do. That's up to you guys.
Jeff, how, what, can, can we wait until full council is here to make a full decision on it?
Sure.
Okay, then I, I rescind my.
Yeah.
My motion on that right now. Because I'd rather have, I'm in agreement with Ryan. I'd rather have full council here to talk about it.
We'll just put it on for next meeting.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
All right, thank you.
I mean, everything's here in town. If you want to keep it in town, it's not a big deal. Couple of days, we'll have it, you know, so.
Okay.
Sure, that's fine.
Minutes would have to reflect that it just died. I have to relax in a second.
That's all I have.
Jeff, also that new pickup, you know, we, we've talked about rotating or changing it out every year, you know, we're about to maybe come up on that. Is that?
Not to May, in May. We got the pickup in May.
Okay, so is that what they go by?
I assume they go by the delivery date and not by the purchase date because we didn't get it till the first, the last April or first of May.
I think we, I mean, we approved.
We bought it in.
January.
January or February, yeah.
So I mean, you might, I would hate to miss out on it, you know, not be able to do that.
Yeah, all, as soon as, as soon as David gets back, he's on vacation this week, I'll have a call down there and find out. I would assume it goes by delivery date, but we'll find out, so.
Yeah.
Sure. Yep, I will. Okay?
Anything else, Jeff?
That's it.
Anything for Jeff? Moving on. City attorney John Beverley.
Just the stuff we're going to talk about later.
Okay. Anything for John? Okay, moving on. Mayor, nothing from me this evening. Moving on to old business, account transfer.
You know what? Were we going to talk about the dog stuff today? Would you guys want to talk about that?
No, I, I prefer counsel, full counsel. What's counsel think? You want to review that dog stuff?
Yeah, I think it's better to just let us, give us a chance to review everything if we're full counsellors.
Yeah, absolutely. There's like 12, 13.
Okay. Yeah, we'll review that next meeting with full counsel. Old business, account transfer.
So from what I've been able to dig up and find, the total that was paid out for the Charger was $8,281.66. Taken out of Fund 61 and it was suggested to put into Fund 50. And from what I've been able to see, no other transfers were made, but I will triple-check before I actually go forward with this. But that's the total that you guys want. Taking it out of Equipment Reserve. Putting it back into Equipment Reserve and taking it out of the capital for the police department as it was.
Okay, they're funded, the police department's funded. Okay.
And I have the minutes here that like show all of that and where it should have been done, so.
Okay.
I just need a motion, I guess, for a transfer.
So you want a, a motion to transfer that, that money?
The $8,281.66 from 61, 61, 4,100 into 50, 000120.
So moved, right there. There's a second? Okay.
I can write it down for you.
I guess you lost me a little bit with all the numbers, but basically it's $8,000 that was transferred into wrong account and it's getting put back in right.[1633.83]
Essentially, yes.
Police department, put it back in Equipment Reserve. As long as you're- Motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries three oh. No other old business, move on to new business, which we're not going to discuss until next meeting.
Is that this one?
Yeah.
Wait, on the dog?
No.
Wait.
What's the next one?
Oh, terminate. Uh, whatever, gotcha, sorry. My apologies. I'm reading the wrong members.
I'll say just a little bit, this is the product of some frustrations that Jamie's been experiencing as far as people attempting to put utilities in their name when somebody else in the household has fallen behind on utilities. Possibly people putting utilities in their name and they're not the resident of the, of that household. Or is something in the instances you have?
That's basically the just, like, the other issues that might come up are, like, the accounts have never been taken care of, like, if a spouse passes away or if a father, you know, like, it's never, I don't know what they've ever done to, like, actually update the people on the account. And so, I, I don't know, I don't even know how to go back. Like, some of this stuff, we don't even have, some of these accounts are so old, we don't have reporting information, like, we don't have their driver's license or their social, so if they do, and that's why we sent out that thing and we got, I mean, a few people responded and we got a lot of wonderful comments and-
As an example, it's my understanding now, some of the practice has been if, if, if there are two roommates and one person's responsible for utilities and falls behind on the bill, the other person just comes in and asks utilities to turn it on their name. Which skirts the entire intention of-
Right.
Of attempting to collect those unpaid utilities and so this, this tries to put an end to stuff like that. And if more anything, it's establishing a policy that the city can say, hey, we know what's going on here, it's, it's just a game and a joke, that you brought current, we're not gonna turn the utilities back on for, for anybody that resides there.
Counsel had appropriate time to review?
Mm-hmm.
I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 1058-18.
I do have a question first. I don't remember if you have a response back to my email. This does take care of, like, is this going forward or does this take care of my current accounts too?
It, it, it really, it's going forward, but I think you had common sense reason to apply it to current accounts. This at least, at least gives you something to show people if, if it starts to stir up trouble, right, some of that stuff. Because you have the ability to lien a piece of property, you know, in the instance where somebody has, has passed a spouse and puts utilities in their name, you can put a lien on that property, which then forces that spouse to pay the current utility bill through property debt.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Second. Motion approved, ordinance number 1058-2018. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, motion carries three oh. With no other new business, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for 10 minutes regarding an attorney-client privilege to include-
Hey, Jamie.
Counsel, mayor. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries three oh. We will reconvene at 7:32. No action being taken at this time. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So, motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries three oh, meeting adjourned.